Yeah, you want this?
Perfect. I would like to call the special school board meeting for Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, would you please take the role?
Yes, Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Ms. Campos?
Present.
Mr. Dix?
Here.
Ms. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Martorana?
Here.
Dr. Mayberry Mace?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, a second to approve the agenda?
Alonso's so moved?
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Dix. Board members, please cast your votes.
Norris, yes.
Dr. Mayberry Mace?
Yes.
The vote is approved, seven zero. We have one item on our agenda for the special session. The item is public hearing to establish the FY 2026 property tax rate pursuant to Iowa Code 24.2A. Shashank Aurora or Dr. Roberts, would you like to present the matter before the public hearing?
Good afternoon. So, to be in compliance with the House File 718 and the budget statements to taxpayers, there needs to be a standalone public hearing, and that's the reason why the board and we are convening today. Just to remind of the tax notice timelines, the board had set this particular hearing date on March 4th, and we had sent the proposed tax rate to the Department of Management on March 5th. And it was sent to the Des Moines Register to be published on 10th, and it was published on 14th, and today is when the special board meeting is being held for the proposed tax notice. So as you would see, we are keeping the tax rate exactly the same as last year, and the rate has been coming down. In fact, if you see the next slide consistently over the since 2015 to 2026, last 10 years, we have really reduced the tax rate. Unfortunately, the statement that has been sent to the residents is a little misleading, if I can use that word. And the reason why I say that is for two reasons. One of them is an example that has been sent to the residents, they have taken an increased assessed value from 100 to $110,000, a 10% increase. This is an even year when property tax, when property valuations are not revised at all. It should have been 100 to 100. The second thing is the rollback went up from 46.34 to 47.43%, which brings in another 2.3% impact. So if you take both these two elements out, when a taxpayer looks at this notice, he says the tax rates are going up by 12.65%, which is not the case, which is definitely not the case. 10% is being driven by the increased property values, and there'll be no change in property values this year. And the second is rollback on which we as a district have no control whatsoever. There is again a state mandate as far as the rollback goes. The only thing which is driving a little bit of a change is the increase in SSA. Unfortunately, that has still not been approved. It's still under negotiations, so we have made an assumption, but we don't know whether the assumption that we have made is the right assumption or not, but we had to make some assumption. So that is one, and second is a slight increase in student enrollment, which is driving it up. These are the two large reasons. The other reason I would say is there has been some increase in overall property values in the area which is, which comes under DMPS, approximately around 2, 2.5%. So these are different drivers which is making it appear 12.65% increase, but the two biggest drivers are the increase in property value by 10%, which is not going to happen this year, and the rollback. Any questions?
Thank you, Shashank. This public hearing is required as part of the district's certified budget. The notice provided to each resident shows the maximum total property taxes the district will adopt as part of the certified budget, which will be adopted by April 30th. The board secretary is hereby directed to enter any written comments into the record of this public hearing. For those of you in attendance, thank you for being here today. We value your input and are interested in hearing your comments. If you are planning on speaking, please fill out the form on the side table. Sorry. Including your name and address and hand it to the board secretary, your names will be called in the order received. Each speaker will have a maximum of five minutes. Your public comment will be considered as part of the district's final budget decisions. As a reminder, board members are present to listen and to receive these comments, but will not engage in dialogue or respond to questions during this meeting, but may address issues that arise at a future board meeting. We are ready to proceed. The public hearing will come to order. Ms. Rios, is there anyone wishing to speak to item B1 or wanting to submit a written comment?
I do not believe I received any or any request for written comments.
Hearing, no one. I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Without objection, this meeting is adjourned at 5:38 PM.
Point of order. Just to clarify, no speakers, correct? Or did you express intent to speak? Anybody in the... No?
Is there anyone wishing to speak? Okay.
Okay.
All right, without objection, this meeting is adjourned at 5:38 PM. We will move into work session to discuss reimagining education.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will begin our work session at 5:38, and I believe I am handing it over to you, Mr. Smith, for presentation, and then board members will have an opportunity to ask questions.
Sure, sure. Dr. Roberts, anything? Okay. Well, thanks for the opportunity. So tonight is just a lot of information sharing, so going to provide you with some hard data regarding the community engagement sessions and specifically the survey data that we've received back. So there's no slide deck because it's hard to look at data on a slide, and so there are just handouts in front of you. A couple of things, though. You have this, the summary booklet from the last time. We won't really be looking at that tonight. I've included it actually in the document itself, as well as what is new for you, though, that we just received last Friday, the 21st, at about 7:00 PM, is the demographic of our respondents breakdown, and so that is there for you as well. I've also included that synthesis of that data in the actual document that I'll be referencing. So in front of each of you, and I also emailed it just for Jackie and Skylar. So the document that I'll be referencing is the Board of Work Session Community Engagement Results. It's sort of a Word document. You'll notice sort of immediately if you just sort of flip through, there are nine pages, and so I was not planning to address every single line item, but rather highlight areas within each section. And if there are no other questions at this point, I'll get started. Sound okay? Perfect. So the way this synthesis is sort of organized is we'll look at the overall sort of demographic data of our respondents, and so what this particular dataset represents is the breakdown of the 2,100 respondents on the survey. And so that's what you'll see data specifically referencing in tonight's conversation. So we asked the respondents three specific sort of demographic questions, if you will. One is the area in which you reside, and we had that categorized through a drop-down menu utilizing it, the term was neighborhood, but it's basically high school feeder patterns. We also asked about race and ethnicity, and we also asked about the relationship with DMPS. So tonight's particular dataset references each of those demographics, the strengths, the opportunities, and the key takeaways in each of those areas as it relates to the overall reimagined plan. Looking at the overall participation rates in the neighborhoods, if you look at the high school feeder pattern, the largest percentage of respondents was represented in the Roosevelt High School feeder pattern at 35%, followed by Lincoln at 19.5%, non-residents at 18.4%, North at 9.7%, East at 8.8%, and Hoover at 8.3%. So the non-resident, which is the third highest percentage, many of those folks represent staff members that don't actually live in Des Moines, but they were respondents in the actual survey themselves, and it's also inclusive of parents who don't live in Des Moines but open and enroll their children into Des Moines Public Schools. So those are the predominant respondents when it comes to non-resident. Race and ethnicity, so I tried to give the comparison of what, how folks self-identified in terms of race and ethnicity in comparison to our student demographic data. And so American Indian and Alaskan Native, 1% of the respondents identified as such compared to a 0.4% in our student demographic data. For students that identify as Asian, we have a 7.4% representation of student demographics as compared to a 4.1% in our respondents. And so that particular race/ethnicity was underrepresented by 3.3%. For our Black and African-American respondents, 7.4% of the overall 2,100 respondents is compared to our 21.6% for student demographic. Again, an underrepresentation of 14.2%. Our largest underrepresented group by race and ethnicity was our Hispanic or Latinx community. Students represent 32.3% of our demographic, and of our respondents of the 2,100, 9.7% identify as Latinx. So each of those areas of race and ethnicity were underrepresented in the overall demographic data. There was overrepresentation for, on the respondents that identify as white. Our student demographic is 31.3%, and of the respondents on the survey, 80% identified as white with an overrepresentation of 48.7%. In terms of relationship with DMPS, you'll see that students represented 23% of the overall respondents. Graduates of DMPS were 16%. The largest group represented in terms of their relationship with DMPS of our respondents was our parents and families at 47%. That was followed by a 39% rate from staff, our community partners were 5%, residents 25%, and other 5%. So a couple of key takeaways about the actual demographics of the 2,100 respondents. The first is, is that our efforts to reach our community, our students, our parents in a manner that would have respondents be representative of our student demographics failed, and so we were underrepresented in several of our groups of students and our families, and we were overrepresented racially with white. Our parents, I was pleased to see that our parents was our largest group represented in our respondent rate of 47%. That's a great number to have. Then 39% of our staff was also a very appropriate response rate in terms of the percentage of the 2,100. And honestly, I was personally pretty pleased with 23% of the respondents being students. And so given the fact that we had the survey open for three weeks, to have 23% of the respondents be students was super, super helpful. So moving to page two, this is where we'll start a little bit of just sort of the high-level synthesis of what the data represents. So we'll talk a little bit about the goals of the reimagined plan as it was stated in the survey, and then in each of these sections, we'll talk a little bit about some key takeaways, the strengths, the opportunities, both from the neighborhood based on, broken down by race and ethnicity of our respondents, as well as by the relationship. And so again, I was not intending to read line by line. This is all there for you, and it's actually being posted on the website as well, so it's there for everybody. But I did want to highlight a few key areas in each of the subcategories. So the first overall data point is when we talk about the goals of the plan, the overall response rate that the plan will help DMPS improve student outcomes, there was a 71% agreement in that of all respondents, which is a pretty healthy response rate. The plan will help DMPS retain quality, high-quality teachers and staff. About 60% of our respondents also agreed and were favorable to that particular goal. 71% of the respondents also agreed that the goals of the plan will be, help us to be more efficient with our limited resources, as well as 65% of the respondents agreed that the plan actually prioritizes students and staff over physical plant buildings and infrastructure. Some key takeaways, specifically as it relates to the neighborhood. Our non-resident respondents consistently showed the highest support for all four goal areas. And so what this could reflect is that there is a broad plan approval from external stakeholders or families that are looking to move into Des Moines, and so there's some opportunities there for us to leverage that marketing, if you will. If we move into the strengths, again, I was not going to plan on reading line by line, just going to hit a few of these. If we look at strengths, the very first bullet point under the neighborhood, that improving student outcomes and increasing efficiency were favored across most communities, and this is signaling a really strong alignment with the goals of the plan themselves. And opportunities, though, I want to highlight both of these. Retaining teachers and staff was relatively low across the board, meaning that the respondents didn't see the plan as doing that to the degree that we had identified. And so our communication around this plan retaining staff and retaining students was not responded to as favorably as if the plan did not actually accomplish that in the manner that we're intending it to do so. So there's a lot of work for us to do there. That second bullet point speaks specifically about North may need to, we may need to focus our engagement efforts at North more so, and that's because the response rate at North for this particular area of that feeder pattern and East was the lowest when it comes to retaining staff and students, and so our outreach efforts in those parts of the city were not as effective. And so that's an opportunity for us to do better. So we had 16 different community engagement events, each equally in each parts of the city, along with some virtual events, and we just didn't do a good enough job. I didn't do a good enough job myself in making sure that we had representative respondents from those areas and communicating the overall goals of the plan. Takeaways for race and ethnicity. I'm going to highlight the last three bullets there as it relates to race and ethnicity when it comes to the goals of the plan. Our Black and African-American and Hispanic/Latinx respondents showed moderate agreement, typically around that 57 up through 65, 66% range of agreement, and so that reflected some cautious optimism and mixed perceptions. The racial category of other or multiracial category had the lowest favorability, especially around retaining staff. Again, this just reflects that myself, we just didn't communicate the plan super well, and so there's an opportunity to improve that moving forward. The opportunities under race and as far as the goals themselves is that second bullet there, retention of high-quality teachers and staff has received the lowest rating for most groups, most notably for our Black respondents and the respondents around other. Again, just highlighting yet again, our communication efforts just didn't land the way we intended it to when it comes to the goals of the actual plan itself. Other key takeaways as it relates to the DMPS relationship, interestingly, the staff and students showed the highest level of agreement across all four goals. So this indicates there was 81% favorability amongst staff and students, and, or 81% of favorability for student outcomes and 80% for efficiency. So this indicated 65% agreement on most goals with an efficiency rating of 64%. So when it comes to students and staff, what we are apparently, in terms of communicating the goals of the plan, that's actually going pretty well, and so our internal communications is stronger than our external communications, is what this is representing when it comes to the intent of the goals behind the plan. I'd also like to note that the parents and residents showed steady to mid-range favorability, generally between 55 to 70%, which suggests some moderate alignment with the overall goals of the plan. When it comes to strengths, I went ahead and hit all three of these, just to be honest with you, that the staff were the strongest supporters, especially on student-focused and operational goals. Our parents favored efficiency at 70% and the student outcomes at 67%. It showed that our family stakeholders resonate with these core priorities, and our students expressed support across all goals, reinforcing that the plan speaks to the student experience itself. So those are strengths particularly. We still have some opportunities when it comes to various components of the relationships. Residents not identifying in other roles showed weaker alignment, especially on teacher retention and student and staff polarization. So that's a really interesting data point, that in and of itself. So it's representing our communities that are either, they're also not staff members and they're not parents currently, and so they are just residents of our district, highly important and critical residents, and our data is showing that they just basically have some, there's lukewarm sort of alignment to the goals of the plan itself. And so again, it just speaks to our outreach and our abilities and our opportunities to do better by our stakeholders that are not parents and or not staff members in our district but reside in DMPS. We've just got to do a lot better. Our internal communications appears to be pretty strong. It's externally where we've got a lot of work to do. Moving to page four, outcomes of the reimagined education plan. So that was all about the goals of the plan itself. This next dataset again represents the outcomes themselves. The outcomes are that we will increase access to full-day preschool. There showed 86% support from the respondents. The redesign of the middle school experience showed 66% support. Development of two or three interest-based signature schools in each region showed 60% overall support. Preparing students for successful futures after graduation showed 92% overall support. And providing high-quality programs and facilities for activities showed 85% overall support. Some key takeaways that I'd like to highlight as it relates to just the areas. Our non-resident respondents were consistently the most supportive across all outcomes, and this ranged from favorability from 67 all the way to 96% favorability, especially for future readiness and preschool access. That was really, really high for our non-resident respondents. Also, in that same takeaway, Hoover and Lincoln showed solid support, notably Hoover High School on preschool access and future readiness. Some strengths, the Hoover community also showed strong overall support, ranking among the highest on four of the five outcomes, and so the Hoover community was really, really responsive to the overall outcomes and the desires of the plan. Opportunities, redesigning the middle school experience and signature schools had the lowest support overall, particularly in North and in East. Also, North consistently showed lower support, suggesting that this community may require a deeper listening session and maybe some more targeted outreach. Again, we just didn't, I didn't hit the mark when it come, when it came to actually communicating with the North community, and so there's a lot of work to be done there to build that understanding and build that knowledge and get some more feedback from that community specifically. Some takeaways from the overall outcomes of the plan as it relates to a breakdown through race and ethnicity. The future readiness is a clear area of consensus across all racial and ethnic groups with favorability ranging from 83 to 94%. The last bullet there, our Black and African-American respondents showed strong support overall with high favorability for future readiness, activities and facilities, and signature schools at 63%. Some strengths, that our future readiness is a standout strength. Again, it scored 82% in every group, demonstrated a shared belief in this value. Our activities and facilities also performed incredibly well. Multiracial respondents showed consistent favorability across all areas of our outcomes. Some opportunities for us, redesigning the middle school experience and also the signature school, both of these were to a degree polarizing in our community across the board, and so we've got some work to do to educate and to inform our community, our staff, and our families regarding the redesign of middle school and the overall signature schools. There are some key takeaways as it related to the DMPS relationship subcategory. Again, parents were the most consistently supportive, especially on preschool access, future readiness, and activities and facilities. So that was a great indicator for us. Also, community partners and graduates showed the highest support for future readiness. They were less supportive of the signature school outcome. Some of the strengths were that the future readiness is near universal priority with over 90% favorability in all groups except residents, and so our future readiness outcome is showing really, really strong support across all groups. Preschool access is also widely supported, particularly by parents and community partners, and activities and facilities is also really, really well-received across all groups with favorability of above 77%. There's still some opportunities for us, though, when it comes to our outcomes and specifically around the relationships, which is signature schools. It's the least favored initiative across all of them. Redesigning middle schools is also relatively low at around 60%, and so we've still got a lot of work to do when it comes to creating a degree of confidence and competence around signature schools. We just were failing on that end, and I'm failing on that end when it comes to informing families and parents about that. Page six of nine, by the way, for everybody, page six of nine, I just want to give them an understanding of where we are with that. Proposed changes of the reimagined education plan, so this is, there was a lot in this particular section, right? So when we talk about the proposed changes, we're talking about grade configuration changes, creating signature school programming, adding classrooms, adding more than 300 core classes and retirement of schools and district facilities. So the change to the grade configurations received overall 61% favorability. Creating signature schools created, was 60% overall favorability. Construction, new classroom additions and collaborative spaces received 80% favorability, and adding more than 300 classroom spaces received 71% favorability. And adding more than 300 classroom spaces received 71% favorability. The lowest favorability of the components is not surprising. It's the retirement of schools and district offices. And that was 46% favorable. And so there's just a lot more education that needs to be done there too, about the why behind the retirement of facilities. To be honest with you, to see 46%, almost half of the respondents were in favor of it and understand the reason behind that when it comes to our budget situation, both current and projected. So some takeaways around that. The North community consistently showed the lowest support, especially for retirement of schools and facilities. That was also sort of anecdotally true in, with meeting with school community and community members around the plan itself. Lots of conversations around the retirement of facilities, both in the North and the Northeast region. East and Lincoln respondents were moderately favorable with more substantial support for infrastructure-focused changes like classrooms and makerspaces. So some of the strengths of the overall proposed changes, additional classrooms and makerspaces, collaborative spaces was really, really favorable amongst all groups. Some of the support ranged from 71% from North High and 87% to just non-residents. There was a lot of support also for additional core classrooms across the board. Hoover had the most consistent favorability among in district communities, showing strong alignment in facilities, classrooms, and grade configurations. Some of the opportunities that are still in front of us, that of course retiring schools and facilities is pretty divisive and it's polarizing for folks, understandably so. So we've got a lot of work to do to continue to inform folks about why that would be and some opportunities in front of us to place those dollars into staffing and student programming. The signature schools in ninth grade configuration received some mixed reactions. North and Hoover communities were less favorable on signature schools. East, Lincoln, and North communities showed below 60% support for grade reconfigurations. So these two proposals warrant some additional conversations and some communication and marketing. There were some key takeaways as it related to the overall proposed changes as it relates to how respondents identified racially. Classrooms and makerspaces received strong favorability across all racial groups, especially with American Indian, Alaska Native, Asian, and Hispanic Latinx communities. The strengths, again, classrooms and makerspaces was really, really clear. That was a very, very favorable proposed change across the community, which, just to be honest with you, that bodes well for a potential bond referendum because these are very, very high favorability marks across the board. Additional core classrooms also had steady support. So some of the opportunities though, around improving our communication has to do with grade configurations and the retirement of school facilities. And so there's a lot of work to be done there. These received some of the lowest favorability. Again, overall, respondents were favorable overall. They were over 60%, but they were among the lowest of each of these particular areas. And so there's areas for us to improve on that. As it relates to some of the key takeaways, interestingly, the parents showed the most consistently high support, especially for grade configuration changes. That was at 68%. Classroom and makerspaces was 78% and additional core classrooms at 69%. Our community partners also were strongly supportive of infrastructure improvements and addition of core classrooms and grade configurations. As far as strengths, the classroom and makerspaces were highly favored amongst all groups. The real opportunities again exist in additional information and communication when it comes to retirement of facilities, signature programming, and grade configurations. Interestingly enough, the graduates were the most skeptical group overall. And so I'm not sure what to do with that information yet, but I just know that graduates were the most skeptical. And so there's more to unpack there specifically. The last actually aspect of the particular data set that's in front of you right now, again, this is just an overall synthesis, is the, the specifics around the potential signature school programs. Respondents had an opportunity to choose any of these. They were not limited to one or two. They could have selected any of them. The most favorable response when it comes to a signature program is that of STEM. 634 respondents selected STEM. Second was career and technical education programs. Medical and health sciences was ranked third, if you will, in terms of the number of folks that were, expressed interest in that. Performing in visual arts was fourth and Montessori was fifth. But each of them obviously received some interest and some degree of interest. So some of the takeaways as it relates to the neighborhood, the non-resident respondents showed the highest interest in signature schools at 84%, which is quite a bit. That's pretty high, indicating it's a strong appeal for families outside of our district. And so again, the non-residents representing staff that don't live in our district, but also families that are open enrolling already. So the East and Hoover communities expressed solid interest with 65% of East responding yes, at 61% of Hoover's responding yes to signature school programs. Lincoln and North communities showed the least interest with 46% and then 42% respectively. So some of the strengths is that the concept of the signature school is, has clear traction, particularly with our external families in East and the Hoover communities. So there's opportunities in the other areas of our district to strengthen that level of understanding and ideally that support for signature programs. Opportunities, they exist all over the place. The lowest interest in terms of signature schools was at Lincoln and North communities. So there's more opportunity for us to do some education there and some outreach specifically. When it comes to takeaways by the, the demographic of race and ethnicity, white respondents showed the highest interest in signature schools, followed by respondents that identified as other or multiracial and Black and African American. Asian and multiracial respondents showed the lowest interest with 16% and 14% answering yes respectively to signature schools. When it comes to opportunities, we're target, it's on the next page. The opportunities for us to consider maybe some focus groups moving forward as it relates to signature schools specifically. It was noted multiple times over, not only in the actual survey itself, but also in the listening sessions in terms of our in-person engagements. Folks are just looking for more information. They're interested very much in the concept and want to know more about it and really about the execution of these particular signature programs. And so there's a lot of opportunity for us to do better with our, our communication, our information sharing regarding signature school programs. Some key takeaways for our DMPS relationships. Staff was 88% and parents were 68% that expressed interest in signature schools. And so staff at 88% was a really, really high number. Conversely though, students were 11% favorable for signature schools. Those two are polar opposites of one another. And so there's a lot for the committee to unpack there specifically, given the fact that our students actually had a pretty high response rate in the overall survey. For 11% of students to express interest in signature schools, that's something for us to consider heavily as a committee and as a district and as a board as we're looking to advance the potential of signature school programs. What I would combine, I'm getting a little off script now, but what I would combine is where there is high favorability in the signature response based on geographical area is Hoover. And so there's some interesting opportunities for us potentially to do more engagement work in the Hoover community specifically around signature schools, given that the favorability is actually really high. And so an example with that, that would be like of the student responses, how many of the student responses from Hoover are showing high favorability overall? So there's more to actually even unpack in the data set that I've provided you today. Some of the strengths is that this, again, the staff is, is very high and enthusiastic. This also shows that in terms of buy-in and being able to drive a signature school program, the staff in general in favor. And they are, they're ready to go. They're ready to champion and to move forward with the signature school programming. Our parents at 68%, our community partners at 72% also show really high engagement potential for signature school programs. As noted in there, these groups are often messengers for the, for the rest of our community around the successes of these particular programs and these pathways for students. Opportunities, again, the biggest opportunity is that 11% favorability of students for signature school program. There's real opportunity for us to dig more deeply into that and to understand what students are thinking and how they would like to see this actually happen. So engaging more students in some formation of potential signature programs and pathways is going to be key for us moving forward. That's it. I just kind of threw a ton of percentages at you.
Thank you, Matt.
What questions do you have?
I think what we'll do is we'll go around to each board member. And board members, you'll have an opportunity to ask a couple of questions. I think we'll start online. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Matt, I really appreciate it. I think just a quick observation or question, which is around how people are choosing to define signature schools, because some of the signature schools are actually designed to do career work, career pathway work. And so maybe just any observations you have about the popularity of career pathways and yet the struggle with the, the term signature schools?
Yeah, I think that's a really, I guess profound observation and the idea that the schools, the, the signature programs and the pathways that were lifted up for the community to respond to in terms of their initial level of interest are those that have been lifted up before in previous survey data and things that have been successful across other districts and other communities in the Midwest and across the country. And so these were, we usually, we utilize all of that data to list these signature programs. And interestingly enough, STEM has been, that's not surprising that that was the most sought after or the most, had the highest level of interest, specifically because it is, it's a buzz even beyond education, right? And so, and to your point Jackie, it involves so much work-based learning opportunities and apprenticeships that I think that's driving a lot of that interest in those areas. Uniquely enough though, that also lends itself to that, that STEM programming being defined as a 712 signature, and it doesn't have to be. STEM can also be pre-K eight. And so there's opportunity for us there to delineate that it is a, a pre-K 12 pathway and it's not limited to just 712.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It just seems like a communications challenge or messaging challenge more than anything.
Yeah, more so than anything, you know, my, my takeaways from the, the demographic breakdowns of this is that our, our communication just lacks information. It lacks, it lacks the details. You know, it, it's great that the overall favorability is there, you know, at 60% as, as some of the lowest. However, we, we could increase that with a, with a more specific level of detail.
Dr. Mayberry Mays?
Yes, thank you. And thank you Matt for the information as well. The, the one question that I would ask is around, which was a bit surprising, around the, the lack of higher favorability for the district's grade configurations. I felt like that surfaced several times that it was not as high, highly agreeable. Are you able to offer any of the maybe verbatim comments as to why? Is it really the sixth grade piece of it? Or is it something in the high schools? Is it the pre-K piece? But maybe where the lack of agreeability for district grade configurations is coming from?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I, anecdotally, in the in-person sessions where, and it's also in, in much of the commentary that you'll see in the, in the larger summary report, is there's concern that's been lifted up about students, for example, in seventh grade, being a, in a seventh through 12th grade environment. And so there was more concern about that, that was lifted up from parents and staff members and, and some students. There was a little bit of concern of, of pre-K through eighth grade, although I think most folks understand and at least articulated that that's a fairly common grade configuration, not just in urban but in rural settings. And so a lot of folks actually mentioned that that's how they grew up, was pre-K through eight or pre-K through six. And so that was not drawing a lot of concern. It was mostly around the 712, having seventh graders in a facility with potential seniors, obviously.
Thank you for that helpful.
So one of the things, just to sort of add to that, was in those conversations, it was articulating that in, in a design like that, it's not as, we would not design scheduling where seventh graders are in the hallways with juniors and seniors. And so they are in, in families and pods, if you will, separate and distinct, and they have their own schedules within. The opportunity from a 712 program is particularly around endorsements and certifications of staff being all located in the same building because it gives you more flexibility. You can lower class sizes. You could do lots of things with that degree of resources, all under a single roof, if you will. But yes, there's, there's a lot more that we need to do to inform families that in that configuration, students would not be eating lunch together from seventh graders and juniors in, in, in school together, things like that.
Matt, just going over what you just went over, and then I was at a few of these town, of these meetings and just kind of sitting back and listening to the conversations with the parents. A lot of them, yes, what you put on here about the signature schools and the configurations of the grades, those were two that I heard. I think one thing that will help us is getting that information out, those questions answered, like we talked about, and getting them on our websites.
Right.
And talking about it. And then maybe going back and doing a second questionnaire or conversation with them after they learn those details of what we talked about or what the answers are. Because going from like the signature schools, that, that does make sense. A lot of people are asked, what are they going to be? So they want to know if it's going to be beneficial to their students. And then I, I had the same conversation with parents that says that they're, when they grew up, they did have sixth to 12th grade. And then people that are coming from different states or different communities that had the K to 12 in their schools. And they just want to see how that looks for us in Des Moines. One thing I did talk about with a parent was they were afraid of the safety between the kids in sixth grade to, I think it was, was it Molton that we were looking at a different?
For K eight.
Yeah, K eight. So they were kind of scared about how safety is going to be with that if their younger kids are going to be with the older kids. So I think once we give that to the parents and let them know that this is the kind of configuration that will happen, I think we'll get a higher number, a percentage of people saying, being liking our idea versus what we have right now. So that's my suggestion is honestly, like, bring it out to them again. If it's on like social media or some type of ad and showing it that way, and then bringing them back in with those questions, the simple questions online.
100% agree with you. Yes.
Let me respond to that. Thank you Board Member Campos for that. I think there certainly is an opportunity for us to, as we think about that doubling back, for the committee members to provide more informational sessions to unpack what are signature schools and what we believe to be, based on the data that we've seen here, some of the signature schools we're likely to have. The term signature school is not necessarily a part of the everyday nomenclature of even educators, right? So we need a lot of unpacking there. I've seen a lot, a lot of the sessions where Matt used the sort of comparison to unpack it by saying, signature schools are essentially magnet schools. And while many are familiar with the term magnet schools, there still is an opportunity for us to unpack, what does that mean? What does it look like? Additionally, historically, and while that is now reflected here in our data, magnet schools have sort of been pillars of discrimination when it comes to equity versus inequities, because magnet schools in many school systems are application schools. And the students who typically have gotten acceptance into magnet schools, what we call a signature schools, are not necessarily the students that we are intending to serve based on this reimagined education. So there certainly is an opportunity for us to go back and sort of unpack in a really deep way, what are those signature schools and signature programs? And I believe that it's 11% for example, of student response that we're seeing, we're likely to see a jump. Don't know what that looks like. It probably includes us leveraging superintendent advisors committee, leveraging some of our student leaders in each of our schools, middle and high schools. And those are some tactical next steps that I know the team will consider. But I think we have a great opportunity to move this number of 11 with our students because that's who we're getting ready to serve, right? If the favorability rating isn't as high, then we need to rethink. serve, right? If the favorability rating isn't as high, then we need to rethink it. So thank you for that, yeah.
Matt, given the racial makeup of our staff, and given that the staff is a huge chunk, I would be interested to see that broken out so that we have, and I know many of our staff members are also parents of DMPS students, but I'd be interested to see where the numbers go. You know, surveys like this, numbers like this are interesting things. And so we could all sort of slouch our shoulders about the representation. I'd be interested to see a little bit more focus on the users of Des Moines Public Schools. Not that our staff doesn't have a really important role to play and a really important opinion about this project, but I'd be interested to see that breakout of the data. How much of, in a lot of these categories, with that being, with staff being one of the biggest drivers here, how much do you think that moved the numbers? And in seeing some of the raw data in the comments, too?
I think quite a bit, to be honest with you. You know, the, thinking back on our communication efforts, I mean, I can point to a lot of fail points of my own in that endeavor. And I think where our principals really, really were sort of shining stars in this work, of them having those informational with their staff, receiving the information and turn around and pivoting and doing that with their staff, I think you see where there's quite a bit of result that came from that. You know, how we talk about things is how things often are perceived as staff members in Des Moines Public Schools. So when we are champions of doing justice and equity work and doing the right things for kids, that oftentimes creates enthusiasm and folks begin to perceive us differently in a manner that is uplifting and asset-based. And so I thought there was really good examples of that in this data set, where staff members took an opportunity that the plan represents and championed it, and it's actually being manifested in data. And I think you can see it in specific areas of the community, Hoover specifically.
How has your perception of the words "future readiness" changed after seeing this feedback? And I raised that only because signature schools were moderate. Signature schools are really all about future readiness, and yet future readiness was lifted up as a huge priority if you look at this data across the board. And so there's a disconnect there. Has your idea about or your perception of what maybe we should be doing about future readiness changed?
It hasn't changed. What it identified was a gap in our communication efforts around future-ready and diploma plus and the academic programming that actually exists in every school that's being rolled out. And so, you know, it wasn't surprising, but it was validating and motivating to see a 92% favorability rate of future-ready, meaning that we all agree that that's actually what we're here to do. What we're here to do is to create students that are future-ready, regardless of what that future holds for them, you know, whether it's enrolled in list or employee. We all have a part in that. And so it lifted up opportunity for momentum and galvanizing us as a city and as a district around that effort.
The last thing I'll do, and I'm sorry to ask three questions here, but the last is more of a commentary. And I hope that this doesn't come out sounding more harsh than maybe I intended to, but you've raised it several times, the community raised it several times. And in individual conversations with parents and families, it's been raised over and over and over again with me. And that is the communication of this plan, of this effort, of what we're trying to do here, and making sense of it. And I am incredibly disappointed at the professional help that we got in this effort, and just need to say that out loud in a public meeting, because this is a great idea, and this is a great effort. And there are a lot of people that are really excited about giving our kids a better chance at the future that they want to build for themselves. And I just, to have that derailed in any way, shape, or form, because we're not articulating it well enough, or we're not planning out the communication well enough, or we're not reaching out to enough of our constituencies, I think that is a huge disappointment from this, but one that I think we can pivot from and have time to recover from. I am glad about that. But I think you're right to point to the communication as a real hampering of this effort and getting feedback.
Yeah. Let me respond. Thank you for that, Board Member Dix. You know, one of the sort of tenants in which we continue to anchor this work, this really life-changing, admission-critical work, is with this spirit of continuous improvement. And so while we have extended significant resources, I have an external communication partner, we are certainly looking at a stronger collaboration between our external partner and our internal communication team. I believe that we are going to get better and improve on how we are sharing information, receiving feedback. That's an area that certainly I wouldn't lose a lot of sleep over. And yeah, I'm acknowledging, as Superintendent, we've had some missteps with communications, but I think we are getting the right traction. You know, one thing that comes to mind for me, and I wanted to just bring it into the space, the Reimagining Education Committee have continuously leveraged a partnership with consultants in this space that have had proven experiences. And so the communication partners that we have leveraged certainly have also brought a level of experience and expertise and success in very similar undertakings. And one that I think we're going to add, one sort of reference point we're going to continue to add is, now I'll share with the team, looking at Georgetown University, the Edumonics Lab, which a lot of school systems and large organizations are looking forward to partnering with now, they talked a lot about how to have effective communication strategy with these huge initiatives. Two or three things stand out to me that I think even Matt just referenced, that we're going to get better at. One, with any large undertaking around changing the school system, there are two groups of people who are the strongest ambassadors, principals and teachers. And we're going to continue to make sure that we are creating more opportunities to have those individuals, and they're ready and willing to do so, to be at the forefront of our messaging. Secondly, they've talked a lot about when we are thinking about these big initiatives to advance equity, for us to pause on how we're using the word equity and instead use fear. Because fear, while probably synonymous with equity, to some extent, is likely to be better received in our current environment. The third thing that I certainly want to emphasize is, and I've seen the Reimagining Education Committee, they've done this very, very well. And instead of really talking about the problematic or challenging past we've had, maybe over-index on the bright future that this plan will bring into this community. And those are some of the areas where we are going to get better around our communication. So excited waters to come. So I really appreciate you bringing that into the space.
I would have some of the same concerns that some of my fellow colleagues shared. It concerns me when I look at page two, under key takeaways by race and ethnicity, you know, about the cautious optimism or mixed perceptions. Because that, to me, really tells me that people, you know, might not clearly understand what the idea is about. And the session at North, I think, to me, there's a difference between getting people to go to, you know, a meeting and drawing information from them. That's different from a session where you provide information, you provide awareness, you educate, and then people can openly ask. I think that the feeling of the session, or at least I'm thinking of North, it's like people are expected to come, understand, right, the idea, be able to come up in their mind with the appropriate question, as well as feedback that is going to sound intelligent or helpful. And that puts people under a lot of pressure in a short period of time. And I think for that session, the slide was not even, you know, translated. And so people might be listening, and the idea of reimagining education has been an idea that we've talked about for a while in the district. And some of us, it takes a little more than one time to understand, get our head around the idea, be able to process it, and then be able to share it. And, you know, I think with families, it's great to have numbers, but a good number of people show up. But if people are coming and not understanding fully what the idea, you know, is, then they're not really able to, in an educated manner, provide any feedback. So you mentioned the idea of focus groups. And so, you know, my question is, what is it that's in plan in moving forward to continue to educate our community and provide awareness so that families can better understand what reimagining education is? And, you know, at that session, the topic of signature schools came up. You know, to some of us, just school means school, you know? School means going to school and learning, you know? And then you bring up signature schools, and people are like, you know, there's a different kind of school? You know, I thought school was just school, like, school for everybody is the same, right? Well, it's not. And, you know, it's those little, it's those pieces of information, I think, that makes the difference. And so I would just ask that, you know, we be more intentional with opportunities to educate. And then, based on the education, based on the education that you give people, that really will determine the kind of feedback that you will get from them, from families.
Agreed.
I think my feedback's pretty much aligned. I feel like, I feel like, I hope that we take time to reflect on this experience and figure out how we can do it better. And I'm glad to hear, talking about engaging principals and engaging teachers in communicating with families. I know, like, I know that's how Waqee does it. They cascade down and gather information from their families with their principals at the helm. I mean, principals are administration, right? And so I think, how are we having better deliverers of news, whether that, no offense to you and Dave Berger, but what does that mean to the average parent? Nothing. You're nobody, right? I mean, who matters? It's their teachers and their principals and people they trust. And I think that we could be a lot better at gathering information and delivering information with a relationship behind it and getting kind of what we want and people to show up in ways that we do, if we are willing to think about gathering information in different ways. I feel like we did these same sessions around safety, right? It was sort of the same thing. And sort of, again, getting not representative feedback necessarily of the demographics and probably the voices we were looking for. So I hope that this is a reflection point for us. And I think my other question is around who, you pointed out that a lot of the respondents from outside of the district were really excited about signature schools versus our own students or necessarily even our parents. And I think, as we're diving into and having conversations and education and understanding, sort of what are people on the North Side feeling? And what are people within our districts feeling? Whether those numbers are just people who don't live here and think that's just what Des Moines people should do, or whether that's people that are actually going to send their students into Des Moines Public Schools for these signature schools. I don't want us to inflate our expectations with people coming from outside of the district just because they did the survey, thinking it's a good idea. You know what I mean? Like, I think it really has to be people that are inside our district that are excited about signature schools, for me to feel more confident, I guess, in that. And I think it's important that we break down to who's deciding signature schools. Obviously, elementary and middle, generally, that's probably a parent making that decision. But yeah, I mean, I think it's, high school, they're picking, right? And so I'm glad to hear that we're going to ask our students a little more and not rely on parents and teachers to make that decision, because I think that's not going to pan out well.
She bonked her head. Do you want to do another round? Jackie on the phone. Skylar, anyone else have any other questions?
Good. I defer to the group.
I did have one comment I wanted to offer as I listened to this. And it comes from the standpoint of, I do recognize that a large part of the challenge, possibly with some of the unfavorable responses, is likely around the education and communication of some of the concepts. There is nomenclature used. There's certainly some foreign words probably used to non-educators. But one thing I would encourage us all to do, as well as the committee, is that if there is flexibility in the plan for a pivot or an iterative process, that we're actually being considerate of that as well. I would hate for the solution to continue to be that we're just going to educate people on getting to where we need them to be, versus if we're seeing very specific trends, and I haven't looked through it enough, but if we're seeing very specific trends of disinterest in certain pieces of this, that we have flexibility in making decisions. I would certainly encourage us to be flexible in that process, versus, as mentioned, the solution being for us to educate to bring them whole.
Thanks to Dr. Mayberry Mays. That's well received and resonates. I think too often with initiatives such as this one and this endeavor, we tend to put on our hats as being data-iterate and being data-driven. And we want to anchor every decision based on the data that we've gathered. And while there's a lot of credibility there, I think what we're seeing from the trend in terms of responses is we need to have a couple more passes. And I know that the committee will decide on what that looks like, at really meeting with some of these key stakeholders and getting a little bit more insights and reactions and responses from them. I think that's what is sort of coming to mind for me right now. I think we've certainly missed some opportunities. And while we've had a lot of community meetings and engagement opportunities, we've missed some at really getting to the bottom of the voices of those really key individuals. And so at the conclusion of our time tonight, I think both Matt and I can share with you, what are some immediate next steps we are considering as we engage all our members of our community to, Board Member Knox, this point.
I have one more suggestion, I guess, take it or leave it. But to your point, Maria, as you were talking about people not understanding, have we thought about video? Have we thought about any other modes of communication so people can maybe see, like, this is an example of a school and blah, 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 and what they do? And because it is very hard to imagine. And so that would just be my suggestion out, is thinking about other ways to communicate.
The other thing I think I would point out is that, as you look at some of these numbers, part of our job up here is to sort of, you know, raise concerns or do other things. Some of these numbers are really good and shows wide agreement in the community about a lot of the things that we're trying to do. So I think the other thing that should, I think you did raise it up, but I hope you don't hear us saying, or me saying, that I walk away feeling discouraged about this. I think there's, I'm actually encouraged about a lot of the information you got there. I'd like to see, I think my takeaway is I'd like to dig deeper and see more to make sure that we are getting everyone's agreement for what we think is a good idea. But let's just dig deeper to make sure that it's more intentional.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think, I see it as a map, right, roadmap. It really, it's leading us to what we need to be doing next.
Thank you.
All right. If board members don't have any additional questions or comments, what I would offer is that you take some additional time after this evening to read over the documents that have been provided. Prior to the meeting, I noticed that these documents were not available on board docs. Will they be added for the community to review?
They will be, to the website as well, yes.
To the website and to- To the website and to board docs.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. And then, um, if board members have additional comments or questions regarding the data, if you could provide those to board leadership and, um, we will compile those for Matt, you and your team and Dr. Roberts. All right, with.
Thank you all.
With no additional.
May I? Uh, I, I think it would certainly behoove me on behalf of just the amazing Reimagined Education Committee just to offer some closing thoughts and certainly to say thank you to the board. Um, the conclusion in the executive summary of the report really highlights the fact that this, this reimagined education plan presents a transformational opportunity for Des Moines Public Schools during a time when, uh, we've seen mixed reviews about how folks are investing or not investing in quality public schools. The conclusion talks about the, how important it is to acknowledge the feedback we've gotten as we move forward. Um, I, I have to share that in about 25 years of serving in, in public school systems, this is without a doubt the most exciting time of my tenure. And it is exciting because of the investment that I've seen, not only from the Reimagined Education Committee over the last year, but from every stakeholder group, from our parents, from school leaders, from teachers, from staff, and certainly from the board. We've heard your excitement and you've continued to challenge our, our mental model and push our thinking because you two want to get this right for the children who knock on the doors of the Des Moines Public Schools, not only now, but for this entire generation. And, um, the feedback you've shared with us tonight, the feedback that we're going to continue to receive from the community, I know that this team will go back to the table over and over and over again, as they have done and continue to do, to make sure that we refine how we are approaching this work to get it right. Um, because based on my experiences and that of other members of the, um, executive cabinet, when we interact with individuals, um, that includes legislators, community members, business partners, and certainly our faith-based community, um, we are hearing the same levels of excitement. There's some tweaks that we have to make, and our commitment is to make sure that we make those tweaks so that we can really galvanize, uh, more of our community and leverage the voices of every single, uh, person who will benefit from the reimagined education plan. This is a time for us to truly reimagine education and reinvigorate all of our schools here in Des Moines. So, Matt and team, thank you all. Uh, we have work to do, let's do this.